To the Finance and Performance Committee today, my name is Zahira Nas. I am the Chair of the Finance Committee. Thank you for attending and welcome to this meeting of the Finance and Performance Committee today. The meeting is open to press and public. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will be available to people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have received three public questions, one supplementary question and one statement. Please can I request that mobile telephone and all other devices are switched on to silent as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from town hall staff at Assembly Point in Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance and Performance Policy Committee member introduce themselves and I'll start with Mary.
Council Mary Lee, Darnall Ward.
Good afternoon, Abdul Khyun, councillor for Firth Park.
Good afternoon, colleagues, councillor Eldor from Manor Castle.
Douglas Johnson, councillor City Ward and Chair of Housing.
Good afternoon, Martin Phipps, councillor City Ward and Green Group spokesperson for the committee.
Councillor Nice Chapman, member for Mosborough Ward.
Martin Smith, Doron Tutley.
Councillor Mike Leary, member for West Ettenfield and Vice Chair of the committee.
Thank you very much, everybody. Apologies for absent councillor Gareth Slater and councillor Mary Lee is subbing for him today. There is no exclusion of press or public. Item three, declarations of interest, would anybody like to declare an interest in? No?
Yes, sorry. So there's reference on the tech item on capital approvals to access, I think it's proactive and reactive care. Just in case that's a reference to a product offered by the Access Group, they're my employer. So I just wanted to declare that in case, I don't work within tech, but I just thought it's worth mentioning in case that is the Access Group.
Sorry, which agenda item is it? Is the capital?
Yeah, item eight and the page I'm referring to is page forty five and that's tech, technology-enabled care tasks have changed, minor variation of scope.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Phipps, David will check. Item number four, minutes of the previous meeting and this is on page eleven of the agenda pack. Are members okay to approve? Yep, councillor Johnson.
Just wanted my apologies noting, I did give apologies and that's why I had Toby Maddison substituting on the eighteenth of August, so it's page eleven. Just if that could be added, that would be great. Otherwise happy to approve.
Thank you and yeah, there is two sets of minutes in this pack, so yeah. With councillor Johnson's amendment, it's approved. Thank you very much. Councillor number five, sorry, item number five, public questions and petitions. There are two remit questions. Hilary Smith, would you like to come up first and ask your question? Thank you.
So my statement's in relation to the ethical procurement review. At July's Finance Committee, I asked how the committee would engage in its review with individuals and groups who have raised concern, both in this committee and at full council, about the council's continuing refusal to reduce its links with companies complicit in human rights abuses in Palestine. No approach has been made to me or to the coalition. I see no evidence that any serious consideration is being given to how the council will ensure that it can reduce its links with businesses and companies which are complicit in Israel's illegal occupation and apartheid. On Wednesday, this is Wednesday last, the United Nations Commission of Inquiry found that Israel is engaged in genocide against the Palestinian people. This council therefore carries an urgent responsibility to act and in particular to ensure that the recommendations by Francesca Albanese's report to the UN Human Rights Council are taken into serious consideration. And I referred to these in my question in July. I see no reference to her report in the council's draft ethical procurement practice. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you, thank you very much, Hilary. The consultation is ongoing. Thank you for reading the document we will feed if you'd like to your statement. I can refer on to the ethical procurement team to make sure that it's fed into the draft document. So if that's okay, I'll refer that on to that and I'll also give you a written response in terms of your statement here today. Thank you. The second remit question, Annie O'Hara.
Thank you, it's Ogara actually. Okay, Barclays has not replied to the weighty letter sent by the Chair of this committee reflecting widespread concerns and seeking urgent clarification about the bank's dealings with companies whose weapons, components and military technology are used by Israel against Palestinians. Over and above the issues in the letter, Barclays has an agreement with Israel to act as a primary dealer for its government bonds, thereby helping Israel directly to raise money which can be used to fund its genocide, unlawful occupation and apartheid across Palestine. The terms I use are now all confirmed by the United Nations as reflecting the legal reality and the true nature of Israel's actions and political position. The letter to Barclays acknowledges the potential reputational and financial risks such associations made by its bank may pose to institutional customers like local authorities and the need for honesty from Barclays, given that Sheffield is committed to ethical procurement. So the questions, was any communication from Barclays received following the letter? You say you are actively pursuing the matter and the reply was due August the twenty ninth, how are you doing this? Have you set a new deadline for a reply? And if no reply comes, what action will flow from Barclays evasion of accountability?
Thank you, Annie, and I apologise, Annie Ogara. As of from today, we still have not had a response from the Barclays Bank. An email has gone from the Director of Finance to Barclays to request urgent attention to our letter. As soon as we get a response from Barclays, we will then consider our next steps. But thank you very much for your question today.
So you've sent an email?
Yes.
And what about the last point, if no reply comes, what action will flow from Barclays evasion?
I think this is a discussion that we'll have, I'll have with the deputy and the spokesperson for the Finance Committee and we'll decide on the next steps, what do we do next? Thank you, we have a agenda question from Paul. Would you like to, is it a statement or is it a question, sorry, question, that's fine, thank you.
Schedule seven of the Procurement Act two thousand and twenty-three sets out the mandatory and discretionary grounds council can use to exclude companies from tendering. Discretionary exclusion also applied under the earlier rules, PCR two thousand and fifteen, but Sheffield was reluctant to apply this power as campaigners discovered during protracted discussions with officers and members. We therefore welcome the draft ethical procurement policy, page six, listing these examples of grounds for discretionary exclusion. Directly contributing to or profiting from unlawful armed conflict, intentionally facilitating through their trading activities the unlawful occupation and exploitation of contested territory or systematically engaging in violations of international humanitarian law, including modern slavery for profit, either directly or through intermediaries in their supply chains, engaging in trading activities in places where competent international organisations, i.e. the UN, the ICC and others, have identified a high probability that excludable misconduct has occurred. The policy says that companies will be actively scrutinised for their complicity or support in such behaviour. Question, why is discretionary exclusion not explained in the Code of Conduct for suppliers in Appendix One? Second part, the United Nations has affirmed that Israel is committing genocide. This applies now. How will that fact affect existing contracts, e.g. Barclays? Or investments, e.g. pension funds?
Thank you very much for your question, Paul, and thank you for taking the time out to read the ethical procurement policy in his draft and the supporting documents. We are welcoming feedback and you know, this is the reason we are having an open consultation with members of the public so that you can. It's really important that we take feedback from members of the public. The team will review all feedback and I can also send your questions to the team to make sure that it's considered when we are looking at all the draft, sorry, all the consultation that people are sending back to us because we are receiving feedback and we'll include that in the review. So it is an open feedback until the twenty ninth of September, so until the twenty ninth of September we are asking and encouraging members of the public to continue to feed back to us so that we can consider everything that, you know, people are highlighting really important issues like you have brought today. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anything need to be done with this?
Moving on to item number six, members' questions, there is a non, item number seven is the work programme and this is on page twenty-three of the agenda pack. Joanna, is there any updates for us today?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, bear with me. So we've got two new items, both for the October meeting of the committee, one property services report and one about citizens advice Sheffield. The ethical procurement practice has been moved also to the October meeting along with the modern slavery statement and the lease of the business centre at the Wicker has been postponed to a future date. Any further questions, I'll have to pass over to officers, thank you.
Thank you, is there any councillor Smith?
Yeah, thank you Chair, it was just on the ethical procurement thing, I know that's taken quite a long time, quite rightly, to prepare. It's slipped, are we, are we sure that that's going to come to the October meeting? Because I know it's already slipped once or maybe twice already, just reassurance please, thank you.
Yeah councillor Smith, I don't think it can delay any longer and I hope, I'm quite confident that it will come on to the October date. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, I know about something, I think actually that's a fair comment though, it's only two weeks from the close of the consultation to preparing the full report, but let's see where that goes. Just a quick question, on the new item on supporting people via citizens advice, which is an important one, I just want to flag up that a related item came to Housing Policy Committee and was taken off the formal work plan on the basis that it comes here and specifically is to include debt advice for council tenants, which was an item identified. Just wonder if we can just include the reference in that in the work plan so we don't lose sight of that. So just yeah, specifically debt advice for council tenants, who was the item flagged up there. And second point is just about the lease to SIAK, so the last item on page twenty-six. It says the more time is required to allow for further internal consultation. I'm just wondering if we know where we are with that because this has been, actually going on for several years and I think, I want to know if the lease has expired now and if that creates any particular difficulty now. It would be useful to have an update on that. It might be something we should take away for a briefing for members of the committee. Appreciate overlaps with the community strategy and lots of work's been done in that area, but as I said, this is a group that I know has had worries about the future of their lease for some time and yeah, I appreciate that. Is that something we think could take away?
Thank you councillor Johnson, yeah, I mean, I have asked questions around SIAK. I've been told that it was delayed because it needed some more time, but we do want to see that come onto the work programme. Hopefully one of the briefings, we might be able to get a bit more information in regards to that. And in terms of debt advice, we'll make sure that we include that as we report it, thank you.
So just, just for, yes, I checked back, it was actually January twenty-three, so that's two and a half years ago when I was chasing up for the delay at that point with our internal team. So a bit worried about how much extra time they want, but I'd like to see some progress happening there. Thanks.
I agree, thank you. Any further questions or comments now? Are we okay to approve? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, which is on item eight on page thirty-three of the agenda pack and this is capital approvals twenty-five, page six. Over to you Damian.
Thank you Chair, I'm Damian Watkinson, I'm the Finance Manager for the Capital Team. Here to present the changes and amendments to the capital programme that have come through the approvals process this month. As usual, our tech in committee, responsible committee order, so starting with transport, climate change, regeneration, climate change. We've got thirty-one and a half thousand pounds for initial feasibility for a twenty mile an hour zone to be delivered at Crabtree as part of the overall twenty mile an hour strategy for the city. Got nineteen and a half thousand for initial design works for a parking scheme to manage on Troutbeck Road, to manage the impact of displacement of parking that's resulted from the South West Bus Corridors scheme that's been implemented. The twenty mile an hour scheme at Cemetery Road had previously been earmarked for feasibility, but it's established, it's been out and established that there's been some legacy schemes that had already installed the required twenty mile an hour signage in that area, so we're removing that from the capital programme. Design and feasibility have been completed at Netherthorpe for that twenty mile an hour zone and the cost of to deliver the programme now, being put in place, an additional thirty-one point eight K to go on to deliver that scheme. The Crooks Valley Road Safety Scheme, which is at the junction of Harcourt Road and Oxford Street, is now moving on to delivery, requiring an increase of twenty-seven point eight K. This is due to, there's been some changes to design following the build out, that there has been around some mature trees in that area and also I noticed there's a line that's missing in that report, so I apologise for that. The increase is due to Amy not included the correct signalling infrastructure in the initial estimate, so there's a line that's not finished in that, in that section of the report, so I apologise for that. It's meant to say the costs were increased due to the incorrect signalling infrastructure being included in the original quote and that's why costs are slightly higher for delivery. There's been an ongoing scheme at Broadfield Road, a junction improvement around London Road, some road widening. That's been ongoing for several years, it's now substantially complete, but there were some final costs to stat diversions by Northern Power Grid, that's coming at an additional one hundred thousand pounds and that's been funded from the local transport plan funding. The adult health and social care area, this is just a change in scope of the technology-enabled care that councillor Phipps referred to earlier. It's, the overall purpose of the programme is to trial some new technologies to support people to remain in their own homes in the longer term and reduce the need for care. Previously had been approved to a trial, a couple of, one or two new technologies. It's now, we're reducing one element of that, which is the chip tech, so they can deliver more through the active and reactive care and voca Alexa schemes as well. No overall increase to budget, but it's just to note that change of scope. Under housing, the roofing programme, councillor's roofing programme is coming forward now for final award. Initially, a contract was awarded in December twenty, which delivered, which was supposed to deliver around six thousand properties, delivered around thirteen hundred and the contract went into administration. Since then we've been backing up to tender, those tenders are in now and they're ready to award that contract. It requires an additional two point two million because they're adding in a further three hundred properties that have been identified as requiring investment since the tender process has been going on. We're also looking at spending around one point one million on bin store fire safety, so this is in low-rise blocks as a result of revised fire regulations and some surveys that have been completed is to improve the safety of refuse storage areas. So we're looking at compartmentation, fire stopping and application of fire retardant materials where appropriate. Under education, children and families, there's a school window replacement scheme in progress. So this is looking at feasibility at four sites, intake, Bait and Nethergreen and Maresbrook, identified as part of the ongoing condition surveys that are taking place on the school estate, just to make sure that these are kept in good condition. We will then see after feasibility, these will come forward as individual schemes with individual budgets for the replacement as required. Bradwith Primary School is having feasibility works done on a sort of a complex joint scheme. A lot of interlinked parts in this, the heating, fire risk assessment and roofing works due to the heating being delivered via individual gas, gas air heaters in each individual classroom, which has flues going through the roof for each scheme, so the roof is also suffering issues and there are some fire compensation works need doing. So in order to manage those together, because they've all impacted on one another, there's an overall feasibility being done at Bradway Primary School costing around one hundred and ten thousand pounds. Under the special educational needs section at Watercliff Meadow, looking to invest one point three million to provide a dedicated SEND provision as opposed to, they've got a current arrangement where we have a temporary facility which is within the school's nursery provision. This will initially accommodate fourteen children who are on roll at the school, but in the longer term this will become an SEND hub that can improve provision for SEND across that area. Rushy Meadow Children's Home, increasing the budget, additional forty-five K due to changes required to the staircase and compartmentation identified by building control and that should complete that project at a total of nine hundred and fifty-five K. Educational development and skills, we have the Low Carbon Project, which is an increase of seven hundred and ninety-three K. It's the continuation of a grant funding scheme for small to medium enterprises, to access funds to implement appropriate carbon reduction schemes. It's funded by the UK Share Prosperity Fund, which is coming via the Combined Authority. Then grants for acceptance, we have two from the city region again. The Transforming Cities Fund City Centre Scheme, which is for twenty-seven million pounds and the Darnall Attic Lifter City Centre Scheme, which is twenty-six point four million pounds. So these are grants to accept at this point, expect to see the business cases for the delivery of these schemes to come forward in the coming months and I believe we've got a briefing organised with members this week to update them on progress on those. In terms of grants for issue, to Bent Screen School improvements, we initially awarded four hundred and three thousand for improvements at Bent Screen School. The first payments to that were made directly to the school, the school's now academised and so the remaining, remainder of that, two hundred and seventy thousand is to be paid to the Academy Trust, Nexus Academy Trust, who have taken over running and so they, as a grant funding agreement now needs to be with them. And then finally on Appendix Four, we had a couple of schemes which were brought forward as conditional approval on confirmation from the Combined Authority that gain share funding was in place. Also that's been received, I got with email confirming that on Thursday last week and it refers to the community hub at Manchester Road, which is part of the Stockswish Towns Fund. It's additional four point six million on these schemes, taking up to around sixteen million. The initial proposal and outline business case was brought forward to sort of an affordable scheme within the eleven million, original eleven million pound budget, which was rejected by the Towns Fund Board. They wanted to include several items that were, that would retain the intended character and transformational effects they expect the hub to have. So that's, they've also increased the scope of the fit out. We've seen inflationary increases, additional design costs in relation to that, but those increases are spelled out in the report. And then also as part of this, the placemaking scheme is being reduced significantly by four million pounds. So initially intended to deliver a new market square, there's been a decision by the Towns Fund Board to reprioritise towards more community-led projects. So at the moment, the intention is that the, what was a placemaking project will just result, return to just the demolition and reinstatement of two buildings on the High Street to leave an area for development, but that will be subject to a further business case coming forward. At this point, all that is suggesting is we are reducing the amount of the budget in the placemaking programme by four million in order to allow the community hub to proceed. So I'm sorry if that's a bit confusing, but it's been quite a tortuous process to get to that point around the Stockswish Towns Fund, so hopefully that makes sense. And I did share some briefing notes for members before, a couple of weeks ago around that, confirming what the Towns Fund Board have been deciding around these matters.
Thank you very much Damian, David, you'd like to come in first?
Yeah, just the point councillor Phipps raised. Councillor Phipps, you said it's a product potentially by, produced by your employer, but not in relation to your work?
Yeah, potentially, I can't tell who produces it or not, but if you Google it, my employer is the top result. So I think it's probably likely clear.
So the test is whether there's a direct impact on your DPI, which is your employment. If you're not involved in, there is no direct impact on your employment and therefore you don't need to exclude yourself from this item.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah Damian, can I just ask a question on page fifty, fifty-one? Where we're spending a lot of money doing feasibility on checking windows on schools. Thirty-eight thousand pounds per school just to go around and check whether the windows need replacing. We could buy a lot of windows for that, I wondered why we were having a big feasibility study.
My colleague here, Adam from Capital Delivery Service can probably comment on this as well, but we've had several instances whether there is no, a lot of surveys that need to be done in terms of asbestos and then the impact that it could have in other areas on fire, fire risk as well, but I don't, Adam, do you want to answer?
No exactly that, it's more than just going around and having a look, it's carrying out surveys and and that sort of work that needs to be done to make sure that we're doing it properly.
Also, I mean, if these, if these costs don't come in at that level, this budget will just roll over into the delivery as well. So this, we just like to make sure that there's significant, the significant, sorry, there's sufficient budget in place to deliver this, rather than, do this feasibility, rather than we put in insufficient and then have to come back to yourselves and say, ah, it's cost a little bit more than that. So we ask our colleagues in Capital Delivery Service to make a robust estimate and let's say what will happen is if this, like I say, if it's not all used, all we'll do is roll into the delivery of the scheme then. So we'll keep, we'll keep, obviously, and then we monitor, obviously we monitor against these budgets as well, so we'll see how much is used of these.
Damian, councillor Chapman's asked a really important question in terms of, sometimes we see feasibility studies, don't we, and the cost does be really, really high. And I, I get what you're saying, it's not just going around and checking, there's lots of surveys that need to happen. Could we at some point have a briefing on this? It'd be really good to kind of understand when we are doing feasibility studies, what exactly are we looking at? Obviously, it's going to be different things for different projects and schemes, but if we get an overall feel for what a feasibility study means, I think that'd be really useful.
Yeah, happy to do that. Would that be done as a briefing, committee briefing? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair, sorry for that. My main question is around page 46, the council housing pitch roof project. Why has it taken three years from the original contractor going bust to us appointing a new one? Presumably, these roofs have been deteriorating. Three years is a long time, so, but there must be a reason.
I mean, I'd have to divert to colleagues in housing service who have been, who have been reviewing the spec and the tenders and various processes they've gone through. Councillor Everie's raised this on several occasions, I will go back through the notes there and confirm the time and get a full timeline now that we're at this stage. I'll ask colleagues in housing service to produce a full timeline as to why we got, how it took so long to get from that stage to where we are now in actual delivery.
Yeah, thank you, because that is a heck of a long time. The other question, if I may, on page 45, just the tech-enabled care tests of change project. We know the budget pressures in that part of the council. How confident are we that those, those tests are actually going to, that the work's going to be completed in this municipal year?
Again, I'll have to get, get back to colleagues in the adult health and social care service. They're looking to bring forward another variation as well next month around helping them monitor their work more efficiently as well. So I've, I've got, I've got a couple of calls to be making with that service, so I will confirm with them and I'll come back to you on that, you know, what their level of confidence is in delivery of this.
That'd be helpful and just perhaps a general comment, Chair, because that service is under so much pressure, maybe something around all the projects that you've got running off there to, to try and help them? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Everie.
Thanks, Chair. Page 57, I'm really pleased to see that we've, we're seeing the Transforming Cities Fund project come forward. I do note that the enabling works commenced on 10th of February, so that's six months ago. But I did raise last time that it really will help this committee to have a tracking mechanism on these big schemes, so that we know at each stage, if there's any financial changes, that they come to this committee and what the financial changes are. So we can see these projects, which are long-term, through their entirety, and if anything needs to be done at a certain stage, we know where we are. Can we do something about it?
Yeah, I'm hoping the briefing that you'll be getting, I think a knowledge briefing next, sorry, tomorrow, I think it is, will be a first stage in that. So I've got John Shortland to come in to give you the overview of the TCF and CRSTS programmes. And I know they're working on improving their overall programme management, so, and then as obviously as part of the, part of the monitoring, part of them bringing the business cases through, I'm monitoring what financial changes might be required and we'll try and keep you updated as much as we can on that. But yes, hopefully this briefing that you should get tomorrow will be the first step in that and keeping you abreast of where they are on all these major schemes, because there's also the Netheredge Wedge, which is a little bit further on, and a couple of city region sustainable transport schemes. So I've asked them to include all that within there, so I'm hoping that will provide you some of the context that you're needing.
And the second question I got was on the placemaking in Stockbridge. So it's dropped down to three and a half million, but you say you're going to put forward plans for development of that. Is that the limit of that fund that's available in terms of three and a half million? In other words, it's not going to be a project coming at five or whatever? How are we going to deal with the finances?
So at the moment, this variation was something that I said they needed to bring through at this point, so that within the overall approved budgets that they've got to spend, with putting the extra four into the community hub, they had to take £4 million from somewhere and this was their decision at this point. This is just a reduced allocation. Effectively, this scheme still needs now to have a revised business case brought forward to say exactly what they're going to do with that. It's going to have to sit within the envelope that the Towns Fund have effectively set themselves by doing that, unless they're able to source additional funding to bring that forward.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks. I think councillor Smith made a fair point about why it's taken so long on the re-roofing contract. I just thought of responding with, you know, what I do know about it as Sheriff of Housing, because I agree, it's been a bit tortuous really. And I, I think the whole project was derailed with the original contractor going into administration, which of course happens in the construction industry. But I think my reflection on that and some other big projects that are going through, and this is a big project, I mean, it's a £50 million, £50 million of investment in our council housing stocks, so it's really important. But is that actually the, the use of cuts in the service mean that our own internal team that's there to set up the procurement and management of the asset maintenance is actually really small? And there isn't a lot of headroom in the size of our team to deal with these big projects when they suddenly go off the rails or something unforeseen, like an entire company going to administration? Because that in turn takes a lot of untangling with, you know, the money we've put into that firm, dealing with the administrators and so on. So I'm guessing that's it. I mean, obviously, there's, it's also a moving target, so I mean, it's, it's welcome. Other 300 or properties to come into that. But yeah, I, I do share the frustration and it will be good to see things moving again at last.
Councillor Everie?
Can I just come back on that for a minute, Douglas? Because in delivering something like this, the inflationary costs far outweigh the costs of actually having a small team and then you could go out and have somebody bid it for you, rather than using in-house results. Why wasn't that considered? We've had a similar issue with the area homes issue, which has meant that that's gone. So do we not have a fallback in these situations to make sure that these big projects get moved on quickly, rather than just relying on an internal team and potential lack of resources? Thank you.
The, the area homes was the other one that I was thinking of, because I know it affects your awards there. But again, another big project with, you know, unforeseen difficulties and frankly, the team we have is too small to do that. The problem is that even if you try and outsource something as an intermediary to outsource a big project, you still need someone within the council to do that. And of course, you still need resources to fund that outsourcing. So it's probably not an answer to do more outsourcing of that. It's actually the funding that's at the core of this, which is essentially provided through the housing revenue account, paid of years by tenants. And, you know, it's a service that has been cut year on year for quite some time now. So yeah, that is fundamental to the difficulty of those pressures there.
Thank you. Councillor Dodd?
Yes, so, so if this is the case, why are we not reviewing the resources within the housing revenue account team to make sure we've got suitable resources if you're going to do it internally?
Yeah, so I think the simple answer to that is, is again with budget pressures, because you could put more resource into that if you took other resources out of some other service. So it's about, you know, where, where such cuts would fall. I mean, I think it is under review all the time and of course, we'll be going through the budget setting process, but I'm, I'm just highlighting the, the difficulty where there's not enough money to go around to have, you know, the full complement of officers that you would want ideally.
Thank you. Councillor Dodd?
Thank you, and it's a really enlightening conversation. It feels like there's a kind of connection here between the timeline question that councillor Everie was raising earlier, not least if we're seeing now a drawdown of what, £2 million to account for the fact that there perhaps weren't two or three more staff four years ago, the, the, you know, offsetting costs, particularly as we look to multi-year financial settlements, where we're going to be able to make those trades between costs that occur in one year and in future years, which we haven't been able to make for quite some time. So it does feel like something that would be helpful for the, both the housing team and the finance team to look at. I had two questions following, picking up on colleague, questions that colleagues have made and then, and then two others. Councillor Chapman raised the issue of feasibility and in, in your response, Damian, you said that feasibility carries forward into the next phase of the capital process. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I've ever seen one of these budget documents that details a carry forward from the feasibility phase. Am I misremembering? Does this, is this something that often does occur? And if it occurs and it's just not highlighted to us, could we ask that in the future, we're noting where feasibilities have come in under budget and therefore there's, there's additional carry forward available for, for the delivery of the project itself? I think that would be helpful. I don't want to incentivise us to spend not enough on feasibility, because we know that it's really vital to making sure we adequately cost the eventual thing, but where teams have been able to make savings in a feasibility and there is carry forward into the overall project, that would be helpful to know. And then I think there is merit in us picking up on this timeline concept. I'm conscious that, and, and colleagues who've been on the council a lot longer than I have, kind of reference decisions or things that were taken in 2000, 2001 and that we're only now just coming back to. And these approvals that we look at every month feel quite static. It's quite difficult to know where have we been and where might we go next and when might I expect to see this again? And I know you've previously given us a really helpful briefing about the various different stages of the outline business case and the full business case and all of that kind of thing. And so some way of being able to track projects through that, I do think would be helpful and perhaps that's something that we can cover in, in the knowledge briefing that you mentioned. The two additional questions that I had were, and, and maybe councillor Johnson can also take this forward through housing, but I'm curious what lessons we're drawing from the pitch roof contracting situation, both lessons for our contracting process. How did we come to contract with a business that has since gone into administration? It does sometimes happen, but it would be useful to think about if there's anything we've learned from that circumstance to inform our future contracting. And similarly, it sounds like that there are some potential things that we should be looking at about the intervening period as well. And so I wondered if you could let us know what the team have already done to try and surface some of those lessons or if you're able to take that question away to them. And then on page 48, a much more straightforward question, I'm curious about where the low-rise council housing is that's going to be benefiting from these bin stores. Thanks.
Yeah, I can find out and I'll pass that back through, where, where the exact locations of the specific sites.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments? Some really positive capital schemes. I'm glad to see the pitched roofing programme going ahead now and we all know councillor Everie has been, you know, asking questions on this for a very long time in, in briefings. So it's good to see that it is actually moving ahead now. I agree with the comments that members have made today and thank you, because the first meeting in terms of tracking larger projects is going to start tomorrow. And hopefully that will just give us an overview on, on some really large projects that sometimes, you know, we, we kind of want to be involved right from the start so that we know the journey that project is going through, so that's really important. It'd be good to have a list of the bin store fire safety programme, just so that we can see, you know, where that's happening. A new permanent send provision is being constructed and, you know, providing a dedicated self-contained space for sending pupils, that's very, very positive as well. You know, it creates some more spaces for children. So overall, really good, positive schemes coming through. Tomorrow, we do have that knowledge briefing and I think that'll be the first kind of overview of larger contracts that, you know, and I think we kind of almost need to create a tracked project list, so that we are kind of able to track, look back on where a project has started and where we are now. But this, this report does come with recommendations for approval. Are we all approved yet? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Damian. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, and this is on page 71, item nine, and is the council plan outcomes framework and performance report. James, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm presenting the quarter one, 2526 outcomes performance report. As per previous reports, in, within the pack, there is a detailed performance measure, performance and narratives provided, the measures that support each of the council plan outcomes and subsequent priorities. As per usual, we'll work through the appendix one, which is the strengths and challenges document, which highlights strengths and challenges from across the expansive framework that we've got and general updates. In terms of general update, data provided for this quarter only, only releases a handful of measures, receiving a major update, which is generally the path of the course for quarter one. Going into the next two quarters, would expect to see expansive reports to support the release of key stage four GCSE data, post 16 destination results and updates to road safety measures, killed and saved injured overall and not to 15 years old within the city. Those are the ones that we're expecting. In terms of overall performance system maturity, in quarter four, we saw communities, parks and leisure policy committee take its first baseline report tied to tier two of the performance system. Children and families builds on its baseline report, sorry, education, children and families committee, sorry, builds on its baseline reports established in 2425, taking its full, first full quarter one report earlier in September, along with similar, similar reports taken to housing policy committee. In terms of developing the framework, we did significant work with the policy committee working group during quarter four of 2425. And within both the form two and on page 84 of the overall report, you will see there are a number of measures that we're looking to bring on stream throughout the next few quarters. The table that I've included is a selection of measures that we're very certain we're going to bring. That includes ones that we've already added in quarter four. This quarter, we're seeing new business closures added to the framework. In quarter two, we'll see the people strategy measures, which will give us a much broader view of our HR measures in corporate health. And then looking further into quarter three, when we expect key stage four GCSE results and expansion of key stage four English and maths for pupils receiving centre support and EACP, as well as pupil destinations for apprentices, as well as the overall cohort. We'd also expect to see, though less developed stage leisure contract performance measures coming forward and added to the framework. Beyond that, we expect this list to update as we go through each quarter. And within each outcome, further in the document, I've given really a flavour of what we're expecting. So with outcome one, children's expanded views of attendance, suspension exclusion measures based on demographics, including sent pupils but also ethnicities and localities in the city. Outcome two, we'll see measures including length of stay in temporary accommodation. Today, we'll see lots of progress on, on temporary accommodation, bury and breakfast overall, but this will bring a new time-based element to it as well in terms of how many families are staying in there and expanded measures around council housing repairs and maintenance. Outcome three, we're exploring additional community engagement measures. Outcome four, exploitation metrics related to green industries and jobs, once it's consistent data available from the Office of National Statistics. And outcome five, expanding on the planning measures, including new building dwell, new build dwellings. So that's just a flavour really of what's coming, but I think it's to say there'll be measures rolled out throughout, throughout this year and then subsequent, subsequent years within the council plan, as we continue to take on board feedback and broaden the measures available. In terms of the updates across the different outcomes, start with outcome one, places where children can belong and all young people can build a successful future. We've seen a real strength in the proportion of 16 to 25 year olds on education, healthcare patterns who are participating in education, employment and training. This measure indicates where young people are actively participating in the nature of their talents and will make a positive transition to adulthood. There's a real risk for this quarter not participating, that the opposite happens and there's several negative outcomes from, from not achieving this around social skills, inclusion, poor mental, physical health in the future, employment. this around social skills, inclusion, poor mental, physical health in the future, employment and economic prospects. In terms of this cohort, we've seen sustained improvement, not quite there yet, but towards the target since September twenty-two, twenty-four. We're now up from sixty-six point four, sorry, up from fifty-eight point two percent to sixty-four point four percent, showing we've started to recover. This is above the national average and well above our statistical neighbours respectively. In terms of ongoing efforts in this area, we'd expect to see this continue to increase. Supported internships, which are work-based learning for learners on an education health and care plan. We, they have over eight places planned for, for next year, up from fifty-six and twelve delivered in, in the subsequent years going back twenty-two, twenty-three. In terms of challenges, we've brought back mainly to retain visibility, the percentage of newly made education, health and care plans issued within twenty weeks. I'm pleased to say there's been significant improvement in this area from when we first flagged it. And this was also covered at the education, children and families committee earlier in the month. So we've seen a sixty percent increase overall from the end of quarter four until, until now. And there are plans in place to hopefully see that trajectory continue. A new measure we're flagging for the first time, the number of first time entrants to the youth justice system per one hundred thousand, so the number of seven, ten to seventeen year olds, one hundred thousand that have, having a first time entry to the youth justice system, either for receiving a caution or court conviction. This measure has not been on track for some time, so we're flagging it now, even though it does fluctuate. In terms of our comparators, we are, we are an outlier in terms of performance. We're only Manchester being worse than us in the core cities. But we do recognise that South Yorkshire doesn't utilise something called outcome twenty-two within its youth justice system. That is an outcome that allows the deferment of prosecution until the accused has taken part in a youth offending team activity, which can be preventionary, diversity or educational. There's belief that if this was in place, this could exclude some offences from our figures. And there's working going, work ongoing at a senior level within the youth justice partnership in South Yorkshire to adopt that outcome, outcome twenty-two intervention. Moving on to great neighbourhoods that people are happy to call home, there's real strengths emerging in the households in temporary accommodation or bed and breakfast. While there's more moderate gains within temporary accommodation overall, there's been a real improvement in the proportion of that temporary accommodation that's delivered through bed and breakfast. So we're really seeing, we've seen that that is lowest since June twenty-two, when the strategy came into place to start to encourage progress towards youth offender B and B within two years, which is a temporary accommodation strategy aim. Supplementary data also sees that we are seeing less overall and less, less families in temporary accommodation and bed and breakfast, and also less children in temporary accommodation or bed and breakfast overall. And we compare really well to other, other core cities that's detailed further, further in the, further in the detailed measure descriptions. Moving on to outcome three, people living in care and engaged communities that value diversity and support wellbeing, excuse me. So previously we brought to your attention the percentage of adults receiving long-term support. We'd not had an annual review. We said that this requires some attention. It's previously been on a continued downward trend. I'm pleased to report that in line with the improvement activity that was, that's mentioned in the narrative, we've now started to see an upturn in that, in that piece. So we're just recommending that's continued to be monitored by the Adults and Health and Wellbeing Committee. There's no updates for outcome four this time. As I said, it's quite right on the ground really in terms of national updates and there's more longitudinal data there. But in terms of moving on to outcome five, a city on the move, proportion of journeys made by foot and bicycle has increased in twenty-three, twenty-four by nine point three percent on foot and one percent for bicycle. This is the highest proportion of journeys since this survey's been in place since two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Just note, there was no data for twenty-two, twenty-three. The survey wasn't conducted locally or nationally. Again, another positive in terms of the rate of low emission vehicles per one hundred thousand people in the city, we've seen again a consistent increase in that in the twenty-two, four data. We've recognised that supporting low emission vehicles is also related to REV charges per one hundred thousand. We're currently seventh out of the core cities there, so there's quite some work to do from, from service. They recognise that. And that's a measure that we've got in the framework and we'll be continuing to, to scrutinise against this one. Another good news story is air quality. So both measures around nitrous oxide and around particulate matter ten concentration levels have reduced in twenty-two. There's a strong narrative here from service around the strategies that we put in place and are now coming to fruition, the air quality plan from twenty-fifteen, the air quality strategy, and the clean air plan and the clean air zone. So noting nitrous oxide, NO2 concentration has now just come down to, to within target and particulate matter ten continues to be below its target. And finally, in this area is despite difficult economic environment, the gross value add, the productive output per job in the city grew by three point three percent in twenty-two, reaching fifty-five thousand pounds, just, just below the UK average of three point four. There's a lengthy narrative provided here by our director of economy and culture. But I think the strong narrative is here that locally, business Sheffield reports that despite the uncertainty in the wider economy, small and medium sized enterprises continue to invest in innovation, digital tools, the business project within digitisation grant is oversubscribed, showing that businesses are still willing to invest. And these local insights highlight that we need to keep investing in business support infrastructure so we can keep the, this GVA and other measures like this that we've seen improvements on continue to grow. So that concludes, Chair, the strengths and challenges report. I'll be taking questions.
Thank you very much, James. Councillor Phipps?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. On outcome one, the graph for young people in education, employment or training, and that has a category of care leavers aged nineteen to twenty-one. But on the detailed section on a hundred and two, I think it talks about care leavers aged sixteen to nineteen, but then there is some reference to nineteen to twenty-one year olds in the actual text. I was just wondering, seems like maybe a bit of a mix-up on the header for that one. And then kind of relating to that item, what drew my attention to it was basically everything else looks pretty good against the targets on that graph, but actually the care leavers line is dipping. So care leavers, number of care leavers in eat has fallen from forty-two percent to thirty-nine percent with a target of forty-seven percent. So it's good to see we've got some plans to address this, but I'm concerned that it is falling. Does that fall to like a, does that correlate to a fall in contact with care leavers? And when we're contacting care leavers in the transition period and in general, are we mentioning what's now on offer to help care leavers, whether that's emotionally or whether that's with support into employment, education or training?
So just to answer the question on the metric, there are actually three, you're quite right, there are three measures at play here. So there's an overall nineteen to twenty-one. And then within the lower level framework that we've got at children and families level and nationally, if you look for the comparators, it does break it down into different age groups. So I think what we're seeing here and the narrative come through is the, is the service referencing those, those different, those different bandings. But for the outcome level, we've chosen that broad is nineteen to twenty-one. So I think, I think that's, well, I know that's what's at play there. And I'll hand over, if that's okay, and I'll hand over to Meredith to answer your question around the performance.
So just to give clarity, so our nineteen year olds are, are leavers who are part of supporting care leavers. And I think you're absolutely spot on that one of the issues is actually if you've been through a huge amount of trauma, then your ability to then engage in the way that perhaps your peers do is really, it's, it's complex and complicated. But within the work that we do, we keep that engagement with young people. Some of it depends on what they want. We obviously triage vulnerabilities. So if a care lever is already at university, then you wouldn't expect the same level of, of, of contact. And they wouldn't want that contact. But where we're, we're working with young people who've got a range of complexities and that's still a really comprehensive offer that we provide. But the, the, the figures reflect that difference in, in the cohort of young people that we're working with as well and that additionality that children who've been in care potentially have as well, which we need to be absolutely mindful of.
Councillor Leary?
Thanks, Chair. A couple of things. The, the issue with youth offending and that we aren't operating outcome twenty-two, how long has outcome twenty-two been in place? Why didn't South Yorkshire take it up? And also, it says we're exploring adopting this intervention. So when will we know whether this intervention is going to be adopted? What are the implications in terms of resourcing for the youth offenders team? You can get my drift, you know, there's quite a lot of work to do here before you can adopt this. So what sort of timescales are we talking about?
So we're working with partners and with police at the moment. So I think like in any of those conversations where it's partnership, it's difficult to always put a, a deadline and timescale on it. And actually, this has been in place for quite a considerable amount of time. And, and it's not unique to South Yorkshire Police. There are a number of different police authorities that, 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 that work in this way. And the Ministry of Justice is acutely aware and working with us. And to a certain extent, that's a choice which different police authorities have of how they implement different. I mean, I have to stress that South Yorkshire Police is, really has a very strong children's first approach. Certainly our partners in Sheffield do. We work around the situation at the moment. South Yorkshire Police work with us on that. So the quantity of work that's undertaken by the youth justice service has not changed. But I think that the way that we see it is that actually that opportunity for young people, we've all been young, we've all done things which are probably on the wrong side of, of risky and can then creep, put you into a certain situation. I think what we would want is that rather than it becoming something larger than it is, that there's, that, that diversion which outcome twenty-two allows. So that's part of, part of the issue that we're looking at. And certainly the conversations have taken place with South Yorkshire Police. And I think they are open to a different conversation. Sorry, that's, I didn't, I can't give you specifics because I don't know what the dates are going to be, but we're certainly working with them.
Yes, you can keep us updated on progress of this, please. My other question was about the leisure contract performance measures. Do, does the communities, parks and leisure receive performance updates on the leisure contract at this moment in time? And if not, when will we be in a position to have these, these performance measures in place? Because new contracts have been in place for coming up to a year, I think. So what arrangements are going to be made? They must have performance contracts in the contract because it's in place. So is it coming back to the CPL? And when will the finance committee have these measures?
Yeah, so I believe that the next CPL is going to receive those measures, or at least the proposal for what they're going to be. And then I think what we suggested, we'd have a discussion about which one of those get, so we won't want them all here, but we want to look at which one of those are pertinent at outcome, outcome level. So we've got a discussion probably to have in our development groups around how we incorporate, how we incorporate those. At the minute, on the roadmap, they're, they're a block of activity. It's the first time we've had kind of a new big set of measures come forward related to a contract. So yes, they will go for, to CPL for an initial, this is what the measures are. And then I think there's a, yeah, bit for us to decide how we incorporate that into the outcomes framework. So you can see at the level that you need to, to view it and then go down, go down into the tiers. I don't have the exact dates for that, but I know that's certainly the premise around the discussion that's ongoing.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Thanks. I've actually got a question about permanent exclusions. So, sorry about that, but it's good that you're there, Meredith. So I'm looking at page hundred and three, where we've got the information there. The thing that stuck out to me was the rise of thirty-two percent of the increase in permanent exclusions in just one year, which sounds really alarming. And just obviously because I think everyone's conscious of just how much damage excluding children from school causes to society for a long while onwards. And looking at the graph, I can see that actually primary exclusions aren't too bad, but it's in secondary exclusions where, where second worst in the core cities there. And that's obviously of concern there. I think the thing about secondary schools is that in Sheffield, they're almost all academies. So what, and then also the other point of interest in here is that the report tells us that the council's own exclusions team is often only becoming evolved at the point of exclusion. And so particularly for one-off offences. But so what that's telling me is there's a picture of here academies willfully excluding children, pushing them out of education. And then correspondingly, we're saying that that's putting huge pressure on our own inclusion centre, which is now reaching capacity. And it's been an issue for a while. So there, there is that issue there about academies doing their own thing, pushing problems as they see it on elsewhere. Our own council resources frankly struggling to be able to pick that up in time. I really want to ask, I mean, is, is my reading of this right? And are there any other comments on that? I mean, it, as I said, it does seem to be academies out of control. Is there fundamentally a problem with the academy system? And any other comments?
Thank you. So I probably should have said before, because I don't have a name tag, Meredith Teasdale, strategic director for children's. I think it's a really complicated picture. Certainly, the meetings that I have had with chief executives of our multi-academy trusts before the summer break and after the summer break, show a real commitment to ensuring that children belong in school. And certainly, there's been a number of meetings in the past few weeks where looking to do things in a very different way. One of the contributing issues is that actually it's a small number of our schools contributing to the large number of exclusions. So there's something about how as an authority and how as schools we hold each other to account. And that's part of the conversation that we've been having with CEOs of maths. There is also something about how as a system, rather than seeing it as a permanent exclusion, that it's an exclusion and there are fresh starts, where other schools take children who need a fresh start. And that again is, is some of the work that has taken place over the last year. And certainly been, there's been some real success with that as well. I think that there is a balance as well within a strategy, which is particularly complex within secondary schools, about how we're driving attainment and attainment which links into the growth of the city, the growth of, you know, the, the, the security of our young people, but also the factor of belonging. And again, in a number of the conversations that I've been having, multi-academy trusts have undertaken research themselves, which shows, and this will be no surprise, a direct correlation between reading age and engagement in the school system. And that starts at the earliest stage, at best starting at primary. So where a young person has a reading age of nine or less, then their engagement in secondary school, their attendance at school has a direct correlation, their likelihood of being excluded, and the fact that they're not able to communicate and engage with the curriculum in the same way. So there is something throughout our whole system that whilst primary, the exclusions aren't happening in primary, there is something about how in that best start world, we're absolutely linking speech, language and communication and supporting young people to, because again, our, our GLD levels are, are also beginning to have a difference with our core cities and not and not in a positive way. How are we really focusing in on that, which will link to exclusions? There's work that we're doing now with schools and there's also that longer term work. And I think again, one of our key areas is how are we, with Sheffield Inclusion Centre, ensuring that there is more reintegration back into schools and back into secondary schools and preventing that exclusion as well in the first place. And so I think that the picture that you've got is not entirely a truth in Sheffield because people are wanting to work together to do things in a different way.
Thanks, that's really positive to hear. And certainly wasn't finding the indirect criticism of the council here. Appreciate it's a really complex picture then. I've got another question, completely unrelated topic. Do you want to take a different order?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks Chair. I do take exception to Douglas's comments about generalisations about trusts and permanent exclusions. I've been the chair of the largest secondary school in the city, and it's the governing body that make the decisions with all the agencies there about children that fall for potential permanent exclusion. And I can assure you, I have refused them as well, even though they've been recommended because we haven't had, clearly done enough work in school to make sure that that child is, can continue to work and doesn't need exclusion. So, and I support what Meredith says, that's perfectly correct. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Levery. Sorry councillor Lee.
Yeah, just, well, my question was exactly going to be exactly the same as Douglas's really was, it's a shocking figure, is it 32% increase this year? I just don't count by them what's happening in schools that makes that happen. And I suppose you've obviously, Douglas has asked his questions, mine are going to be very similar. But I'm just, how many of those children should have a health, an education, health and care plan in place? And how many have not even applied for that, or parents have not applied, or schools have not applied? And also, if reading age is really critical, and I agree with you, it is important, really important, what are primary schools doing to bring people up to the standards that are necessary? Because, you know, it's a, once you're excluded, it's a blight on your life, and that just lasts for many, many years and can last for many, many years. It just, all the opportunities and all the progress you should have made just gets wiped out, I think, for many kids.
Thank you. A number of different answers to the question. So in the first instance, we have been doing a great deal of work. It's been led by Bethan Plant, who's one of our public health consultants with practitioners around healthy child development. And that healthy child development is, so the idea of it is that it sets out exactly what you would expect for each child at each age and stage. Now, you may well think that that's already in place, but it's not. And actually, the piece of work that's taken place has shown that practitioners have slightly different views about what ages and stages young children and young people should be at. So that's coming to fruition this term and is being shared with all schools to help with that understanding of exactly what you would be expecting for a child from the age of zero to 16. And I think that will help with the understanding of where children's needs can be met through an EHCP and haven't been met. And that's a really complex picture. And there's also the element of diagnosis of neurodiversity. And again, whether, how we make sure that needs are met regardless of whether somebody has a diagnosed medical need or not. And that again is the piece of work that's being driven through the SEND Improvement Board and has already been talked about within the SEND Manifesto. So how we're repivoting that. The number of children being excluded is not a positive, and I don't think anybody in the system thinks it is. And that's why there has been that galvanising call, which is about how do we do things in a different way and how do we approach this in a different way? I don't think it'll be an immediate quick fix because some of it also is about alternative curriculum and what we're providing that is different for some cohorts of young people. But that work is taking place. We are increasing our level of alternative curriculum. Sheffield College is also playing a part in that and what they can do to provide something different for cohorts of young people who do struggle to sit in the school day and the school way. There is also something as well about that contract between parents and schools again, which we need to address over the coming years, and that understanding the importance of the school day, of being in school, of being engaged in school and finding ways to do that. So there's a huge amount of work to do, but there's absolutely, I think, a positivity in the city about how we do that from the leaders within the city.
Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Thank you Chair. I think most of my questions have already been raised. A couple of comments, just want to echo what councillor Fipps said about care leavers. I used to do some voluntary work with the Prince's Trust to help care leavers into employment. And I know the challenges they face and how difficult that can be. So anything you're doing to help there is great. My question was really around the EHCP plans again. I know we've been done that, but it's about the statistics. The report talks about a high of 28% completed on time this year. But then it also mentioned 49% for the year overall. I couldn't work that one out. Could you just explain the difference there please? Thank you.
Yeah, so the last year we measured overall was last year for comparative... Yeah, it's different. Yeah, so year to date will unfortunately likely be lower this time. So last time, yeah, it was 49% for the year. So where we are now, moving through the quarters, we're seeing it improve. So yeah, it's likely that, yeah, it's likely that will be different. It's difficult to show every facet of it, so, but yeah.
Can I just come in on that as well? Because I think there are a number of factors here that are really important. So actually, the inspection showed that the quality of our EHCPs wasn't as it should be, and that we need to do more as a system to ensure that quality. So whilst we're ensuring that quality through the annual reviews, there's something about making sure that we're looking at all of the data that's coming through. So it can't just be the completion of new EHCPs. Also, we need to be looking at the annual reviews and making sure that we've got a good percentage of those annual reviews taking place in a system which is really complex and in a system where a lot of partners have got to work together. And that's part of our improvement journey is a focus on education, health and care plans, both making sure that the right children have them, but also that they're the right quality and they're also having an impact on children now. And so all of that, so there might well, I suppose echoing, there might well be a dip whilst we're making sure that actually we're moving from a system that isn't as secure as it should be to one where we've got really good quality plans that are absolutely having an impact and then hopefully will also reduce exclusions.
Councillor Chapman?
Thank you Chair. Can I go to page 146 on the report? The percentage of adult social care providers are good and outstanding. I find this an anomaly because when you're out in the community, all I get is complaints and challenges about the care people have received. And I wondered how CQC had arrived at these figures? Did they just do that on inspecting places or is it a questionnaire consultation? How do they come to these figures? Because it's not what I see out in the community.
Yes, I think this on detail, there's probably want to take back to adult services. But as I understand it, the inspection framework inspects providers in the city. And then we're seeing the percentage of those that have got to the good or outstanding level. In terms of publication of those, those results, they should be available in the public domain for you to read, I believe, like the Ofsted ones. So you can always go away and have a look at the individual judgment, yeah. But then I think if there's a, I'm happy to take a question away to get more detail from the director of Adults and Wellbeing on how those inspections are arrived at. Because I think what we're seeing here is quite a high level national picture of what's come from an aggregate result of the inspections that have taken place.
Councillor Fips, did you want to come back?
No. Mine's on a different question.
No. So you could come back in.
Thank you. So on page 207, for people killed or seriously injured in road traffic collisions per 10,000 population. Again, I was just a bit confused, the how are we doing section says the rate for 10,000 fell to 5.27 in 2024, but the bar chart lists Sheffield at 4.4 between January and December 2024. So they kind of seem to contradict each other in the bar chart. If the 5.27 is the accurate figure, then the bar chart's kind of presenting a more favourable position than actually we're in. If it is 5.27, then we would be third highest on the bar chart. Either way, I know it's mentioned that the rates fell and it's good to see the rates falling. And I suspect the rollout of 20 mile per hour schemes and schemes in favour of more prioritisation of pedestrians, cyclists etc will have helped in decreasing the rate since the baseline 2017 to 19. But it's still pretty high, 5.27. If you look at that for Sheffield's population, that's something like 293 people in Sheffield being killed or seriously injured in road traffic collisions every year. I think there's another contradiction in kind of our policy that we've adopted on this, where we talk about vision zero and vision zero in South Yorkshire, which is really welcome, but our target is to only cut road traffic collisions in half for serious injury and death. Feels like our target should be zero if we have a policy of vision zero. And also, just comparing this to the related statistic on page 119 of children and young people between the ages of zero to 16 being killed or seriously injured, that's three per 10,000 population annually, based on a three-year average. Comparing that to the annual figure of either 5.27 or 4.4, that's over half of the people being killed or seriously injured in road traffic collisions in Sheffield being 16 or younger. So I think that's something we really need to investigate. We also have no target for children killed or seriously injured in road traffic accidents. So again, I think that should be zero.
Yeah, so on the statistics, that all comes from national... I believe, I will go ahead and check this, that it could be the difference becomes from the last reported national piece versus where they might be up to in 2024. I think as I said in my opening piece, we're expecting a big update on both these two measures because they're quite longitudinal. And from that, I expect services that are responsible for delivery and responsible for some of this will do quite an extensive report on this, depending on where the figures have gone. Either way, so that's an opportunity to reset, but we'll go away and check how that comparison comes about. But I do believe it's just because of the timing, because while this national figure's released locally, we potentially have provisionals available that give us a view of what might be going on the ground. But certainly what I'll be bringing back when it's published will be the definitive published results through the Department of Transport that we can hold to account comparatively as well.
And just, so this was raised at the Children's Safeguarding Partnership this week, or last week, we're only on Monday, aren't we, last week? As an area of concern, so both Jamie Henderson, the district commander, and myself are meeting with Greg, felt to talk about what we need to do and what our attention needs to be in this area.
Councillor Lee?
Yeah, he was just on the number of children killed or seriously injured. I think this advertised somewhere that children are more likely to be injured crossing roads when they leave junior school to go to secondary school or when they leave secondary school to go to college. Have we got any data on that, any information on that that feeds into that, that we could just look at? And what are schools and what are we doing to make sure children know that, you know, transitioning from going to a junior school where, which is maybe local to a secondary school far away, you know, quite a distance from home, where they have to cross busy roads and negotiate buses and other hazards? Do they get any training on how to negotiate those problems? That's assuming that I'm right in, I've been read that somewhere?
I don't know whether the data breaks down to that level, but...
Yeah, so just on the data, I believe it does. And I think taking from this conversation, whether in quarter two, quarter three or four when this comes back, that's something I think we'll be asking to break down in quite a detailed expansive report, I think, if we can get, particularly on locality and then potentially the different ages within that. I think it's a real opportunity, we call this really an event metric, it's an opportunity to really get a deep dive and probably have quite an expansive item on it. So in the interim, I'll go and investigate. I know there's a raft of data available underneath the hood. So breaking down that kind of quite high level impenetrable national metric and how does it, how does it play out in Sheffield? And I think that might drive some of the potential interventions that we would want to make based upon that lower level data.
Thank you. Meredith, because you are here, you know, the whole point of the outcome framework is so that we can have deeper dives in areas of concern. And I think listening to what members have been saying today, there seems three areas that people would like, that two areas in your committee for sure. The permanent exclusions, I think, you know, members have raised that. It's good councillor Levery, you are part of a governor, but in some academies, they don't have the governor system, there aren't parent governors at all. And that's one of the biggest complaints I get in one of the academies in my area. 32% increase is, even though it might be low than last year, is still very, very high. I'd also like to have an equality lens on this. You know, what age group, what ethnicity, thinking about areas of deprivation, where are these schools based? I'd like this detail to be broken even further so that we can properly see where the issues are and what schools. But I definitely do think that there has to be a deeper dive on this and also the ECHP plans which members have raised. So maybe that's something that we can talk about outside of this meeting and arrange a further briefing so that we can really have that deeper discussion and raise concerns in the, on some of these issues that people have raised today. But thank you very much Jane for the... Oh, sorry, sorry, there's two more people that want to come in. Okay, so I'll come back to you James. Councillor Dodd?
Thank you. And I would support your suggestion Chair, perhaps we need to add a recommendation to this paper to particularly report back on the exclusions issue. I know that it's covered in the detail of this report, but it wasn't one of the things, from what I can see, that was picked out in the kind of challenges summary. And so it would be good if we could get more detail on that in the future. And I was also just thinking, based on the conversation you've just had James, about the serious injuries, maybe there's something very simple we could do on this dashboard to just indicate whether that stat has been updated this quarter or not, like a big dot or something, so that we know to pay attention to the ones that have changed and that we can wait to dive into the ones that haven't changed when you've been able to update the data. I think that would be helpful. Just in terms of my own comments, I thought it was brilliant to see that the air quality is improving and that we're getting more people walking and cycling. I think that's a real vindication of the work that's been going on across the council through public health teams, through transport teams and elsewhere, to try and encourage people to shift into using those modes of transport more often. And I wondered if you could break down for us the air quality statistics? I'm conscious that there's likely to be quite a bit of geographic variance in this. And I represent a ward that's historically had quite poor air quality and where I suspect there still are a lot of people who aren't feeling like they can walk or cycle. And particularly as we're looking ahead to kind of the next phase of our active travel policies, it would be good to think about how the geographical balance of some of the air quality data might shape where we consider future investment. And then secondly, great to also see that there are fewer people living in temporary accommodation, particularly fewer children. Wanted to express support and appreciation for the team for the work that's gone into that. I know that there's been a lot of effort on that. And I wondered if you can say anything about the kind of onward trajectory for the B and B target? I know it's going in the right direction, but we've set ourselves an ambitious goal of in two years' time. And I wondered if you could, could speak to the kind of likely, uh, path and whether we're going at a fast enough pace, uh, to meet that target. Thanks.
Brilliant, thank you. So your first point around the air quality, uh, you know, the first, I, I think asked us for that during it. So we're, we're, we're on with that now in terms of potentially for next quarter or the quarter after, to break down the locations that, that data's collected. And if we can, map that against, um, our geographies, whether it be ward or kind of local, local area, committee level, try and give a view. Uh, we're just waiting to hear back on where, where those locations are to see. But I think irrespective of, of where they are, we, we need to report it anyway because it gives a geographic view. Uh, in terms of, uh, the, the pace and kind of continued movement on, uh, the temporary accommodation piece, um, there'll be some real detail, I think councillor Johnson brought forward at the Housing Policy Committee in the future. But I, I do know that there is significant work going on around prevention, around some of the other measures that we've, we've seen and, and kind of called out before around returning, um, our voids more quickly, back into, council housing voids quickly back into service and using a proportion of those to provide temp-, temporary accommodation. So what we've seen, I think, in that move now is that project start to, start to make a bite into those figures. I'd have to take away and see where the trajectories are, but there's a strong positive, positive, um, view that that's going to continue, uh, and move towards that, um, kind of reaching that, that top aspirational target, kind of zero. So all the building blocks are in, in place really in terms of, uh, we've started, we've started to see the tip of the iceberg go. But I would have to take that away and probably bring back, uh, I think maybe in the next, next report. Um, because it's like that, we'll see that one again pop up in the next quarters as a, hopefully as a continued strength. But do a bit more of a deep dive on some positives as well. We can really get under the skin of the activities that have gone on in service and quite some substantial work across a huge amount of offices really to make that, shift that metric.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks. So actually, just on that point of temporary accommodation, I mean, I think is right that, you know, in the faces of rising demand for temporary accommodation, it's been about to in that corner. And bottom line is that, uh, a bed and breakfast is no place for children to be in. And, you know, so there's national legislation saying that we should not be doing that. Um, and like local authorities, you know, it's been issued. And I think it is important to recognise that temporary accommodation can be a range of things. It can be B and B, uh, but it can also be completely self-contained council house. Um, and so children in temporary accommodation is not the same as children in B and Bs. Obviously, no child should be homeless, but, you know, where there are some, then they need dealing with. But, yeah, it'd be good to, um, see more about that. And then more generally, I think the points you're making about, um, you know, given that it's been a useful discussion here, people have flagged off some, you know, really important issues, to have some way of feeding back on those specific points, maybe in some sort of written briefing for discussion later on. The point I want to make was not about children at all, but about road surfaces. Um, so again, I'm looking at page one hundred and thirty-five here. Um, and this is the, is best satisfaction on road surfaces. So from the National Highways Transportation Survey and its satisfaction with condition of highways. Um, and I guess this is in the context of, you know, the PFI to resurface all Sheffield streets. So, you know, bear in mind, the nature of that was, you know, setting up a twenty-five year contract with the investment front-loaded into five years of the core investment period. The idea being that all the streets in Sheffield be brought up to condition in that five years, an intensive piece of work. Um, and then, you know, maintained after that. So that ran from twenty twelve, not surprising that core investment period ran on a bit for reasons we needn't mention right now. But my concern is that the graph on page one hundred and thirty-five shows a pretty steep decline in satisfaction from twenty twenty, which is roughly the time when the core investment period stopped happening, down to, well, the present. Um, so a drop from fifty percent satisfaction to thirty percent satisfaction in just four years. And looking at, my reading of that would be that, yeah, the roads were resurfaced, but they quickly fell apart. And so that rate of decline is quite worrying when you compare it to the length of the PFI contract. Um, so again, like my question earlier on, is that a fair reading of it? And secondly, does it flag up an area that we have a concern about planning ahead for the future of the road surfaces in the city?
No, it's a good point, point raised. And this is one of those metrics, much like the Kildon series, and that's not updated during the life of this outcomes framework. But again, when that survey results are out for the twenty twenty-five, that'll be an event metric. I think that we come back and have a deeper dive on. So I'm not going to, going to comment, I think where, where service is the best place to. But as you notice, there's not been an updated narrative for this one as well, similarly with the case. So what I'm expecting is when we have a significant update to these, we get, as well as a narrative update, we get a deep dive. So I think to answer your question, councillor, I'm expecting that. Your questions to be answered when this is next updated, if that's, that's okay.
I think that makes sense. I mean, the, the data points on the graph seem to go up to twenty twenty-four, so it's relatively recent. But, yeah, I fully take the explanation and I, I suppose just want to flag it up as something that we ought to watch in this committee. Um, just because that trajectory looks as though we should be keeping an eye on it. But, yeah, thanks. Appreciate the answer, James. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your report, James. You had a really good discussion today. Um, absolutely really important. Um, so this, this report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's, uh, that's been agreed. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten. Sheffield City Council's People's Strategy, and this is on page two, three, five of the agenda pack. And Lisa will be presenting.
Good afternoon, Chair. Sorry, I don't have a nameplate. Uh, I'm Jane English, Director of People and Organisational Culture. Good afternoon, councillors. Um, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to come back to talk about the endorsement of the People's Strategy and to agree for the P and O C measures to go into the outcome framework that James just actually talked about. Um, you may recall I came in the July committee and received some really encouraging feedback. Um, so I just really want to, I suppose, take a little bit of a back step, just reminder of the strategy. Um, so as you're aware, we don't have any current People's Strategy in place. And really it means that we're not really set up for some of the future challenges that we have from a people perspective. And it means that as a function, we actually remain very active focus. So the strategy has three key focus areas. The first one is priority one, future-ready workforce and leadership. So we have effective and efficient solutions, plans, frameworks, development opportunities and resources in place to support the delivery of the priorities set out in the council plan. The second area, um, is belong, thrive and succeed. So we're an inclusive organisation who values equity and wellbeing through a people-centred culture, which keeps employees healthy, safe, engaged and where their voice is heard. And the third strand is around smart, simple, strong, brilliant essentials. We get things right first time and we make all people's services accessible and easy to use. Our service has customer at the heart and just happens without fuss and enables individuals, teams and the organisation to understand expectations and unlocks capability across the, the organisation. And that is very much around the internal customer service that we provide to the organisation. In terms of the reporting, um, we will do a quarterly update to our Corporate Assurance Board and also to the Finance and Performance Committee as just outlined in terms of the, the framework. And this will be underpinned by an action plan that we will start working on collaboratively across the organisation once we have endorsement for our strategy. Um, we also have the workforce measures and it covers all three parts of the People's Strategy. So it covers, um, establishment and agency costs, sickness in terms of days lost, use of the apprenticeship levy, turnover, engagement and we operate in a safe environment. In terms of the feedback from the July committee, um, it is highlighted, um, if you, if you, if you haven't got it printed off, it's on your screen, it is highlighted. Um, and really we've put a little section in there around place-based leadership, a nod to our devolution agenda. Um, we've put a section in there around alignment to future Sheffield and how it supports future Sheffield, reinforcing our values. And there was also some feedback about some qualitative me- measures. Um, we've added the target in for sickness and we've added the, the target in for turnover as well. We also heard what the committee said around representation and we'll look to present our performance measures quarterly according to our protected characteristics as well. I'd like to just see if there's any further questions, please, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, Lisa? Councillor Dodd?
Thanks very much and thanks to you and the team for the great work on this, both, uh, in the original, um, development and since we last met, uh, in July. It's really great to see the way that the, um, feedback from the committee has been integrated. I'm particularly pleased to see the links to future Sheffield and of course the kind of emerging community strategy work is itself going to inform future Sheffield, which will then inform our people's strategy. And it feels like that's all kind of coming together. I was at the, um, a, a recent multi-stakeholder workshop about the community strategy, uh, in preparation for it coming to us in our next month. Um, and there was a lot of discussion at that from staff and from, uh, external community organisations about the importance of how we do things and the way that our staff are supported to develop the skills that they need to be able to operate, um, in a mu-, more, um, more in partnership with the communities that they're serving. So it's great to see that that's been included. Thanks very much to you and the team.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, councillor Smith? No? I thought you put your hand up. No?
No, I'll say no.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine. There is any further questions or comments? I agree, councillor Dodd. Jane, thank you very much for taking all that feedback from the last committee and incorporating it into the strategy. That's been really useful. So because there is any further questions or comments, we'll move on to the recommendations. Um, are we all happy to agree the recommendations? Yeah? That's been agreed. Um, thank you very much. And that's the final item of the agenda for today's meeting. The next meeting is on the twentieth of October. Um, I'll see all of you tomorrow actually for our pre-brief. So thank you very much. Thank you.